It is just a little bit past 6:30. It is February 12, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Town of Harpswell Planning Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Lori if she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Thank you, Lori. All right, we have an agenda tonight. We're basically going to be going through the Definitions Addendum for the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance and amendments to the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. This has been confusing for some folks, maybe confusing for us as well, but I think we have it pretty well clarified. And I'm going to turn it over to the Town Planner, Margaret, to really give us an update. But before I do that, I want to just say that it's been a real pleasure to meet with the -- where we meet with six citizens who came in, who were confused a little bit about what was supposed to be happening on their land and what wasn't. And Margaret did a really great job of presenting the information, listening, and then giving great feedback. So it was well worth our while to do that, and I'd like to turn it over to Margaret to give the board some background. And Margaret, Courtney wanted to know if we could just summarize what some of the content of the meetings that we had were.
Yeah, so I just want to start by going through some of the material that we have in front of us and is over by the door. So there's an agenda. This is something that my friend Ned Simmons does at his Board of Appeals meetings, and I think it's really cool. So I thought we'd do it here because it kind of explains what we got going on. So we have the agenda. I wrote a memo. I sent it out today, and it's over by the door. Kind of a summary of our meetings and some things that I think. It's not all of my thoughts, but some things. There are two draft ordinances, the Shoreland Zoning and the Definitions Addendum. We have talked a lot about the definition of developed, the DEP definition of developed, and how it interacts with our map. I have taken it out of the draft Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, the definition of developed, because we're not going forward with our maps. But I included it with us so we can discuss it. You guys can decide, do we want to include it in the ordinance? Or do we want to leave it out until we finish our maps? And then the last thing that I have here for us is an email from the town attorney, the town attorney's office, AGA, about the upland edge of a wetland, which is a question that Ned brought up at the public hearing on the 29th.
Where is the developed? I see the Shoreland Residential District, Business District. Is it in here?
No, it's the wrong page. It's the wrong page, but I can read it to you.
Okay, no worries.
So that was really such a good plan.
Feeling a little busy today.
Yeah.
We like to leave room for improvement. You can get it perfect on the first try.
Yeah. So, starting with the Definitions Addendum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
I have not followed the agenda. I jumped in with you way too quickly. We do have a quorum, and let's get the members to introduce themselves, starting with Lori.
I'm Lori Rice, Great Island.
Amy Hyble, Harpswell.
Matt Gilling, Cooney's Harbor.
Courtney Schmelz, Ors Island.
And Margaret McIntyre, the interim planner, also from Ors Island. In the audience, we have Judy Colby George from Viewshed, who is our GIS consultant on the mapping project. And then we have a couple of people who Amy and I met with in the audience, who Amy and I met with over the last couple of days in response to this project that we're working So this project was all started by the adoption of the FEMA floodplain maps in June of 2024. The Harpswell Shoreland Zoning Ordinance includes some areas in the floodplain as resource protection. And it's our responsibility to have our Shoreland Zoning map match what's described as resource protection in our ordinance. So that's where this whole project started. As a part of that, the DEP reached out to me, and I spoke with him a little bit about some of the ordinance language that needed to be changed to be more consistent with Chapter 1000. So then, you know, we talked about this definition of developed in regards to the maps and some other amendments that would work us, get us closer and more consistent with Chapter 1000, which is the DEP mandatory shoreline zoning guidelines. So that's kind of where it started, and I can go through the ordinance amendments, the proposed ordinance amendments, or does anybody have any questions?
I think one of the things that we heard in our meetings was the fact that we had delineated inland water bodies that were, we think are probably 10 acres or more, which qualifies for, by the DEP, as a wetland, a significant wetland. And so when we mapped those, we put those, Judy put those on the map. That, I think, while maybe accurate, was kind of jumping ahead of what we really thought we were doing. And so a lot of the concern from property owners was that they were seeing their property delineated where it hadn't been before, or at least not on a map. And so when we met with property owners, it became really clear that we needed to take those inland water body designations off the map. That's partly why we're not going to be doing the map in this go-round, why we've taken the map out of town meeting, because we have work to do to delineate those inland water bodies accurately. And we want to work more closely with the property owners that might be affected on those delineations and then determining what to do if they do meet the DEP definition. And even if they don't, just talking with property owners about, you know, the significance of the habitat and just from an informational standpoint, not necessarily a regulatory standpoint at all. So anyway, regardless of that, we have more work to do. So what we're going to be moving forward with is just this definitions language and the language that Margaret's presenting.
So when it comes to the ordinance amendments, primarily, one of the biggest changes that Jeff Kalanick from the DEP recommended is that we change from highest annual tide to highest astronomical tide as the upland edge of a coastal wetland. And that is the boundary, if you have a waterfront property, that is the water boundary of your It matters when you have a survey or figure out how many, where the setbacks of your property, you have to be 75 feet right now from the highest annual tide or the hat. The proposal would be to change that to the highest astronomical tide. What that looks like is about 2 and 1/2 inches, 2 inches difference in elevation. The highest annual tide was a chart that was made by DEP. They don't update the chart anymore, so it's kind of outdated information. The highest astronomical tide is done in a datum by NOAA or National Ocean Services. National Ocean Service?
NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration.
No, but it's like their National Ocean Service arm, whatever. So they make this chart, they'll update it, and that was the DEP's recommendation, and it seems to make a lot of sense to me, especially from an enforcement perspective. But getting rid of hat in the ordinance was just a huge undertaking, and so you'll see it in the Definitions Addendum in Shoreland Zoning. So to make the ordinance easier to read, easier to administer, and more consistent with Chapter 1000 from the DEP, we took out hat, anywhere it said hat, and we replaced it with upland edge of a coastal, of a wetland. So, and that's how the DEP has their language. Instead of saying highest annual tide of a coastal wetland or upland edge of a freshwater wetland, it'll just say upland edge of a wetland. There's a definition of wetland, you know, you'll figure out whether or not you're a freshwater or coastal wetland. So that's most of the changes that you'll see in the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. Another change that was made, for some reason that I haven't quite figured out, half of the definition of freshwater wetland was in the Definitions Addendum, and the other half was in the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. And I went back in time, and it looks like it's been that way for at least 15 years or so. But that's the way that the EP has it. They have the whole definition of freshwater wetland in their definitions section, so that's what we did, just move. The definition is the same, we just moved the language from one ordinance to another. So if you need to know about a freshwater wetland, you look only to the Definitions Addendum. Again, consistent with Chapter 1000. And then the other big change, big for some people, is in Section 13.1 point, 13.1, Section 2, talks about what areas within a floodplain are considered resource protection, and that the DEP has changed it from just a velocity zone to all areas in the 100-year floodplain. So a velocity zone or an A-zone. So most of our coast is a velocity zone anyways, so it's not a huge change, but for some people, it's definitely an impactful change. But again, that's consistent with the DEP's standards. And those are really the biggest changes. I rewrote Section 3 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance just to make it easier to read, but the content is the same. And the only other big change in the Definitions Addendum is we added the definition of highest annual tide, highest astronomical tide. Got rid of highest annual tide. So those are the big changes. I know we've talked about it a lot. The only question that I had is, because we're not moving forward with our mapping, do we want to include this development definition in the proposed ordinance that goes to town meeting? Or do we want to hold on to that while we kind of nail down our maps and figure out what does development, developed, really mean for the Town of Harpswell?
I'd say keep it simple.
And take it out?
Yeah, I would take it out.
I feel like it's not simple either way, because either developed is in there, and so that makes it complicated, or it's not in there and it's not defined like it is now.
Let's take it out and work on defining it for another town meeting.
All right. So that would be the version of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance that you have in front of you is the one without the definition of developed.
They're up there. You want one, Matt?
Yeah, the same as we've seen.
Yeah, nothing changed, that means, right?
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Oh, yeah.
I do. So Ned brought up the "and/or" issue, and I wonder if you would, basically, what he said was that it's confusing, "and/or." And so we took a look at that, and Margaret asked the town attorney to address it. Ned gave us what he thought might be a good definition. We sent that to the town attorney, and Margaret can report on that. She's got that in front of us, and I think that sounds good. If Ned, have you seen it?
Have.
Okay.
Ned Simmons from Great Island. The only question I have is, since we met the other day, I've found some more information, a memo specifically from the state about forested wetlands. And my impression at this point, I think we were assuming the other day that forested wetlands were included in defining the upland edge of a wetland. I don't think they are. So I think this language looks fine to me, except where it says "but" towards the end. I think it maybe should say, "but not where such vegetation is dominated by woody stems." And that may have a bearing on the map. I don't know how many of the folks who came in, well, I guess that's a question, were the mapped freshwater wetlands, did that include forested wetlands?
Forested wetlands are a hot topic of conversation. You guys are a forested wetland, correct? Yeah.
My impression at this point is that forested wetlands should not be included, and you should not be, they should not be a setback from, according to the state. I also, I just spoke to Margaret earlier, I don't know how many of you know Rob Bryan. I spoke to, I was in touch with Rob the other day, and he explained or made a rationale for why they may not be included. He wasn't, it wasn't clear to me whether he had a legal opinion on whether they were or not, but he said there was a rationale for not including them because they're not quite as sensitive as a shrub scrub or open wetland. So I think that's still a question. I think we really need, I think you really need to get that answer from the state before you can make any decision. And that may alleviate a lot of people's concerns if that's in fact, if in fact we've been assuming that forested wetlands should be treated like a normal freshwater wetland. And it was on the map, that may have impacted more folks than really should have been. I think, I think that's a big question at this point. And I emailed the state with that question. It's been a week now, I haven't heard from them, so.
And I intend on following up with the state, but I didn't do it yet. I do just want to point out, which I pointed out before, but the upland edge of a wetland, this last sentence, "but such vegetation is dominated by woody stems," that's the same as the DEP, Chapter 1000. I don't think it's easy to read at all.
It's government language.
I would also note that the Chapter 1000 that's online is not the one they're proposing. It's not the latest version.
Right, because they're revising it?
I don't know. Whatever I downloaded online does not reflect what they're asking us to do.
Oh.
It doesn't include the highest astronomical tide, for instance.
That's in their proposed changes. That's not in their rules now, but basically what Jeff Kalanick said was that, that highest astronomical tide is not a data set that they update anymore, and so they, they're encouraging people to move away from it.
They're, it says hi, right now, what's online says highest annual tide.
Right.
So they're asking us to do something that they haven't done yet?
That they're in the process of doing. Yeah. With the understanding that what they have is, you know, it's not a data set that will work for anybody anymore.
Okay.
Yes.
And actually, one other note I'd make, the, I did ask Rob about the, what I specifically got in touch with him about was the, what the difference would be between using the highest astronomical tide and the range of salt-tolerant vegetation. And his, his opinion was that you would rarely see salt-tolerant vegetation outside of a line defined by the tide. And he, I think at the meeting of the day, we were speculating that that may, that the inclusion of that, the vegetation criteria, may have been a way to make it easier for somebody to delineate a wetland because of the difficulty in some cases to survey something that's very far from a benchmark. And my opinion is that, at this point, it's so much easier to get an elevation with GPS than it was 20 years ago, taking a site from a benchmark that might have been a mile away. That may, that may be not necessary anymore and just confusing. It's also, it's also subjective, and it's prone to error. You know, it's, there may or may not be vegetation, you know. Well, there's a perfect example, 200 feet from here, the observation platform out there was placed based on the vegetation, and it isn't over the highest annual tide, so.
So we do the best we can. Scott, would you go to the, and state your name?
Thank you, sure. Yes, certainly. I'm Scott Cowgar. I have property at 242 Longreach Lane, the very, very end on Great Island. And I just want to say, the definition of resource protection districts on pages 12 and 13 is spot on because it does not include the area around forested wetlands. And that's our concern as property owners, I'm here with one of my neighbors. And I think, I think this addresses it, and if you just not do forested wetlands, the map needs a few, you know, at least one correction that I know of. And I understand and support the definition as presented here.
Thank you.
But it's not right on the map.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. But we're not adopting the map.
Right.
Okay. And the map, I just want to say for those who are listening, the map is not a legal document, right? Its delineations are not legal, they are references for codes and planning. So it's better than what we had before because codes and planning can say, oh, it looks like we need to do a sitewalk, or we need to, this needs to be surveyed, but it's not a legal definition of where the exact boundaries are. It's, and in that way, it is confusing. It's, it's not intuitive, as someone said, because if you see a map and you see a boundary on it, you think, well, that must be legal, especially if it's overlaying a tax map. So I think it's really important that we just make that clear, and we keep stating it over and over again. It's for, it's a tool, it's not a legal document. It's just a, it's just a tool for planning and codes. So I guess I'm, I'm not any clearer about this definition and whether or not, I guess I would say that since this is taken straight out of DEP's definition, that that's probably what we should go with. But they're not making it easy for us to help them.
No, but we can definitely get more clarification from the DEP. He can explain at least why it says, "but such vegetation is dominated by woody stems." And what does that mean, and how do we interpret it? I like what AGA did with the A and the B instead of the and/or.
Yeah.
But either way, this can't go to town meeting because it wasn't presented at a public hearing.
Right.
So this would be a change that we could keep working on for further, further amendments.
So what is going to town meeting? Just the highest annual tide and the highest astronomical tide? That's it?
That and the other stuff we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, highest astronomical tide, the moving of the definition of freshwater wetland from the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance to the Definitions Addendum, the inclusion of all FEMA floodplains in the resource protection district as described in Section 13.1. I feel like there's one other thing. I think that covers it all.
Okay.
I reorganized Section 3 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, but the content is the same.
I think I get it. Mary Ann? The podium awaits.
I have to state my name, right? I'm Mary Ann Nave. I'm not, I'm sorry I was late, so I'm not sure what preceded me before I got here. But I had, when the ID of the three wetlands came up last week, I am in, I have the 1995 delineation of the wetlands that were suggested for, for resource protection. And it was the Woodlot Alternative Study that is online and everybody has talked about, and it was used to set up the resource protection area.
Mary Ann, sorry to interrupt. Can we finish our definitions thing really fast?
Oh, sure.
Okay, and then we'll move, then I really want to hear.
I didn't realize, yeah.
We just have to finish this up and get it voted in or out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I really want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, great, let me.
Because I really want to talk about forested wetlands.
All right, so we're looking for, I will make a motion that we move ahead with, to put on the town warrant, we're changing the definitions, consolidating the definitions into one place in the ordinance, removing the highest annual tide and replacing it with the highest astronomical tide, and any other superficial cleanups that Margaret has already described for us.
And the change of the resource protection flood zone, that's the other thing. I know that you mentioned that.
That's right, resource protection flood zone.
Yeah.
So including that per FEMA requirements, right?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Does that give you what you need, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it took us so long to get to this point. It was very simple, but.
It's nothing simple.
All right, all right. Well, we have our work cut out for us in the coming months, which we will be talking about in the next steps.
Yes.
Mary Ann, you want to, you want to try again?
Yes. So. Nothing like having a leg for the park. So as everybody knows, as part of this mapping project that Judy worked on, we identified three freshwater wetlands that looked like they should have been, that looked like they were zoned incorrectly. They were interior wetland zone, Shoreland Residential. So those wetlands were changed, kind of they got swept into this coastal, coastal resource protection mapping project. So we've identified those as areas that should not have been changed, but I do think we're all interested in kind of settling once and for all, are they supposed to be resource protection? Are we supposed to be protecting them at all? Do we, do we not regulate them on a municipal level? And Mary Ann's here to give us some context and some history.
Right. Back in 1995.
Hey, Mary Ann. I think for the people who are listening other places, if you move the mic closer to your mouth, because when you.
There you go.
When you approach it, it's like, great, they'll hear that, but sometimes I'm not sure they will.
Thank you.
Oh, that's good.
That's better, huh?
Thank you.
Back in 1995, the, the town commissioned Woodlot Alternatives to ground truth the wetlands in town. And they rated them based on the type of wetlands they were. The, the report was based around protection of waterfowl and waiting birds. And that is kind of the, and I'm never, I'm never sure of the department, but I think it's of.
Inland fish.
Is it inland fish and wildlife? Okay. So at any rate, there were two or three wetlands in town, number six and number seven. When they did the, when they did the. they did the, when they did the, and there might have been others, but I'm looking at six and seven. I'm not sure which one Scott was returning, was referring to. But basically, when they did the, the ground truthing, they found that it, they didn't meet the three criteria of what would make it a freshwater wetland or a coastal wetland, having to do with the plants that are growing and, I forget what the other two are. But, but they were forested wetlands. Not to say they're not important, but basically, it was agreed that they should be left as shoreline residential because they did not meet the criteria of what they were looking for this particular project. Did I word that right, Judy? So I just wanted to bring that out because I think it was kind of, there's a bit of confusion and caused some questions at the hearing. I don't want to say they're not important. And I think we have other really strong values, but they don't fit the definition of what we were looking for. And I still, I have the original reports and there were like two or three, the Conservation Commission went over it later. And I happen to have all the backup here. So when you go forward, we can keep that in mind and, you know, address those type of wetlands differently perhaps.
And how did all of this, the town's actions in 95, how did that relate to the Open Space Plan in 2009?
When we did the Open Space Plan, we reviewed these particular documents to come up with what was considered resource protection and the reasoning. And we used the, we used this document basically of that to come up with the definitions and everything that we put in the Open Space Plan. And I think the problem, they sort of got swept in with all the wetlands and as time goes by. But if you look in the Open Space Plan, it, it doesn't really call it a freshwater wetland. It, it just doesn't talk about it. I mean, it talks about, for example, you have a focus area with three wetlands and because you write an overview, you say one of the three. You don't really say it isn't, but you don't include it. So I guess all I'm saying is, time goes by and you read these, the documents keep, one was worked on the other one, just in the revisions, words get left out that, you know, probably shouldn't have been.
Any questions?
Has any deline, wetland delineation been done since 95 on a townwide scale?
I don't believe so. I know they've done, they're done individually for people's property, but I don't believe there's been a statewide delineation, other than when we did the, the town property here. And I, I guess I was going to say that if times, in 25 years, time goes by and habitats change, that we would probably, we should really ground truth those again if we were, we wanted to rethink it.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
And how do you think that process should go about? Do you have any suggestions about how we would proceed with revisiting it and ground truthing it?
In the past, I know the Conservation Commission had done some on their own. I, you know, and if there's someone for the planning board, my sense is if we, we would have to get permission from the property owners, of course, we could do a, and we could have somebody knowledgeable with us that would be able to make some determinations. Because these, at the time, the three, it didn't, the three criteria they were using did not, this didn't, I think it would be obvious.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else have any questions, thoughts? That was really helpful. Thank you.
It is. And it's nice to have a base level to start from.
And that's it, you know, unfortunately, they gave me two binders.
Looking at the boil, I think, to figure out whether or not it supports.
They gave me two binders when I went on the commission. Each one weighs six pounds.
Oh, jeez.
It's when they did everything and, everything was typed out, you know, on paper.
So when the 1995 study was done, who decided to do it and how did it, how did it take place? You know?
I, I kind of do, I kind of think, I mean, it's written here. And I think actually, it was, the town decided to do the wetlands, I'm pretty sure. I'm sure I've read that.
Okay.
And then that's when, Woodlot Alternatives at the time did the wetland delineations for them.
Okay.
It might have been prompted by the DEP and, and our shoreline zoning map.
That's when they added the high-value each high-value.
Ah, okay.
That would have spawned it.
Okay. If you, if you have anything that you'd like to contribute, you're welcome to come up to me. I know you have a lot of knowledge.
I have no opinions about your shoreline zoning. I think that was around the time that DEP added the high-value waiting, inland wading bird habitat to the shoreline zoning. And so that is probably what prompted the town to try to identify those. The, then DEP, it was probably like the exact same time that DEP was coming out with their list of what those were. And I know that at first, that list was quite expansive and a lot of towns were kind of distressed about how expansive it was. So it could have been that the town decided to look at that and try to pull it back a little bit, because I know that then later data was released that was less expansive. And so, and just so you know, on this mapping, I didn't change any of the wetlands. Those were the wetlands you've always used. I only changed the category, and only because somebody told me to.
Yeah.
So again, I don't have any opinions about that. But we do, there is, you know, we do have the statewide NWI wetlands, which I can put on if people want to see it. I just had it up there a second ago, which identify the forested versus the emergent wetlands. And they, you know, they're semi-accurate. Emergent wetlands are pretty good at picking up now. And also, some of that delineation that used to always have to be done in the field, now that we have aerial photography all the time, back in 1991, we didn't have aerial photography and we didn't have consecutive aerial photography. So it does make that job less expensive and easier now because some of it, a lot of it can be picked up on the aerial photography. And so people, so you don't always have to have somebody out in the field, especially if what you really care about is, is it forested or not forested? You can delineate that. But, and the new, and then NWI has been updated because you can see that it doesn't, it doesn't actually match these wetlands exactly. But it does show that there are forested wetlands there. So I can put it up if you want to see it.
Thank you.
I do just want to point out, for an example, this wetland here at the corner of Cundy's Harbor Road and 24 has been delineated and is a forested wetland. And so it's not resource protection, for example. That's just one way that our map is wrong, but we didn't know that until somebody wanted to develop that property and they hired soil scientists to go out and delineate the property. And it was found out to be a forested wetland.
Yep. Which is a great example of what, what I said earlier, which is that the maps are for reference only. They're really, they're not legal maps. They just highlight places that we might need to take a closer look at. And, but they're not, as I said, legal documents. Thank you, Judy Colby George. These maps are so much fun to play with.
You can keep learning them.
Yeah. And they really helped us in our meetings with, with the property owners.
So in the map that you just had up, it would be, the dark green is forested wetland and the light green is an emergent wetland, or what we would consider like a resource protection kind of wetland. So there's not much of it in town.
With the emergent.
Right. Emergent. And that would also be where, with wading birds? Is that on here also? No.
The IWW, they're all.
Gotcha.
Do you know of any other towns that have gone through and, since 95 and updated their wetland list? Like, is that something that towns have been doing or?
Yeah.
So if we were, I think if we're going to redo the zoning on the freshwater wetlands, then we should have something that's a little better than 30 years old to go off. So I think that would be a good place to start is, before we start rezoning and stuff, let's delineate what's what.
Yeah, absolutely. And delineate it along with the property owners, so that they're involved right from the beginning.
Yeah, I think that will get rid of a lot of the confusion.
Yeah. And, and the property owners know the property better than we do. So it would just be a good idea, I think, to, to start it from the ground up and, and do that background work first. Okay. So.
I, I also think that as part of this project, we should get Jeff Kalanich to come down and talk to us about wetlands. It's possible Conservation would, I mean Conservation will obviously come to be invited to the meeting and come and, and learn with all of us and maybe they have something to add to our conversation. But I think that it's, it'll be good for all of us to understand the different regulations between freshwater, wetlands and forested wetlands.
Great.
And how they interact.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We'll await that for a workshop.
Yes, for sure.
Okay. So we have completed items one, two, and three with the agenda. The fourth item is the planner's update, and then you just, actually just started it in a way.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
Before we move on to me, is there anything you want to add, Judy? No? All right. I do feel like what came out of this a little bit, I talked specifically to a couple people from Pole Island, which is off of Pinkham Point Road, and they noticed that their, their island is zoned shoreline residential and everything around them is commercial fishing. So because they're shoreline residential, everybody else is commercial fishing, they're subject to these resource protection rules where the people around them are not. And they were feeling, I got the feeling that they were feeling singled out. And I think we got that vibe from a lot of people, like, because my property's not developed, now I'm in resource protection, now I can't develop it. Or because my, because I'm zoned shoreline residential and not commercial fishing, now I'm in resource protection, I can't develop my property. So I think that we can, maybe along with Conservation, do some more outreach and education about the value of resource protection and find a way to improve our messaging so people don't feel like they're being punished for not having anything there. Like Sam Alexander the other day said, well, I'll just build something in that area and then it'll be developed and you can't put it in resource protection.
Yeah, but by the time he left, he was fine with it being in resource protection.
Yeah.
After we explained it to him.
Yeah, but that's just like, people really were feeling a little singled out, I think.
It is the law of unintended consequences.
Yes.
Very much so.
Mm-hmm.
Very much so. And Sam's comment was that it was possible that it was kind of politically motivated, but, you know, we don't really need to go there. It just was a little, it was kind of a curious thing that the person that had it delineated was also the town attorney. Anyway.
I was just going to go back to say, Margaret, that we talked about this at the Conservation Commission meeting last week. And, and we think it would be a good opportunity, as you move forward with this, if we could be part of the process. And we think we could be helpful in just getting information out to the public to understand the value of them, so it's not considered just not being able to use my property. Because they do, of course, add a value to the property that you live on as well. But we'd like to be part of that process going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that's a really good point. We had that same discussion with a property owner the other day. She understood. But there's one other thing I really want to emphasize. There's a nexus between resource protection and commercial fishing. The resource protection protects the marine water quality, right? It, it actually helps keep the habitat alive and productive for the commercial fishing industry. So we want to make sure that whatever happens on land doesn't contribute to polluting coastal waters so that the habitat for lobster production is affected. And it, it's a balancing act, for sure, but they are very interrelated and we can't lose sight of that.
I do think that we, me, all of us, could do a better job of explaining, or could have done in this process, a better job of explaining what it means to be in resource protection and what can you still do with your property. Because you can still build in resource protection. It just has to go through a different process and there's a lot more limitations, like there's a limitation on square footage if you, of your, all the structures on your lot, if you want to build in resource protection. But you can still do that. And I think that that message did not come across at all to people who were affected. And I think, as this process goes forward, I want to make sure that people understand what their rights are, what they can do with their property, even though it is, might be zoned resource protection.
I wonder, I wonder if that's a place for Anchor to do an article.
Oh, yeah.
Explaining what resource protection is.
It's a good idea.
And what the benefits are.
That's a really good idea. Okay.
All right. That's all. And most of what I just said is in this little memo that I wrote. But trying to, you know, reflect on all of our meetings and the public hearing and, and kind of figure out what, what could be done better. And whether or not people, this 500-foot developed circle that we, is a definition that we've come up with, is that the correct answer? Is it correct? Could we have done, is there a better answer than 500 feet? That's what the DEP recommended. But I don't know, Judy, how other towns handle that word.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we not actually discuss that at this meeting.
Okay.
Because it's just going to open up a can of worms.
Okay.
And we are not ready.
All right.
To have that discussion. When we do have it, I hope that we can get really good technical expertise in with us.
Yeah.
And maybe have some preliminary discussions with DEP about that. And, and with, you know, whoever's going to write the, the definition of developed, that we can make sure we've got all our ducks in a row.
All right.
Because we're raised, it's, it's a good, good issue. We are going to have to deal with it, but we're not dealing with it right now. It's not going to be on the docket for town meeting.
No.
So let's, let's put that on an agenda and talk about it in the near future.
All right. All right. Well, then, moving on to the planner's update, these are things that we can talk about again next week, but I do want to have a workshop with the DEP.
Okay.
I had reached out to him about doing a workshop and he said, what do we want to have it about? But I think clearly, we want to talk about freshwater wetlands. But we can also have more than one workshop with him where we talk about jurisdictional reviews or, or pre-cutting, whatever, whatever issue there is, but that he is a resource that we should be using.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I email him all the time, but that the planning board could get some good knowledge out of him also.
And we, we could ask him about the whole developed issue as well.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, why did you do that? Do you see the unintended consequences of doing that?
And, and how do other towns handle it?
And how do other towns handle it? Excellent. Good. Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Not for tonight, no. I really appreciate everybody coming. I know Matt's on his third meeting of the day, Mary Ann's on her second. Jim came in today just to hang out with us here. And Judy drove from Yarmouth and.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody's time and effort and you guys in the audience. It's hard.
Yeah. It, it's a commitment that, you know, it's the fundamentals of the democratic process. It really is, you know? People show up and they do the work and they come and they volunteer their time. And Margaret's making about 50 cents on the hour tonight. And so is Judy, probably. So thank you for coming and unless there are any more questions or comments.
Will you notify the members of the public of the workshop?
The question was whether or not we'd notify members of the public for the workshop. Well, I would say, Margaret. Well, I would say, Margaret, as you know, sent 400 letters out to let landowners know about the, the resource protection issue. So probably, we won't, we will use the normal avenues, which are to publish stuff on the town websites. The agendas are always published. It does mean you have to just take a look at it and check it out, but we will make sure that the public notice requirements are adhered to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But my suggestion would be to subscribe to the town information. There's a place you can go on our website. And then when Jim publishes the calendar every month, you'll get a notification. And then if there's any calendar changes, so you, you can make sure you see the calendar and look at any Planning Board meetings. And then the agenda, the agendas are under the town, on the town website, under Planning, and then Planning Board, and then agendas.
Yep. And if you subscribe, you get a, you'll get two text messages. I mean, we get text messages all the time.
Yeah.
Those of us who subscribe. So it's a really good way of keeping track. You may get more notifications than you really want, but.
Definitely.
All right, any further? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.